Yeah.
You know, those are needles, right?
Yes.
This is not you, this is us.
Oh, yeah. If you go to see America's something, I think that's well worth seeing. Pretty impressive, yeah. Pretty impressive.
I think overseas.
Yeah, yeah, they're starting to fill in. Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the girls if they're ready. Sons of Waverly, yeah. Whole series. Right, man.
They weren't two years.
No. Jamie and Liz? Jamie, are you guys ready? Okay, you guys are all ready? Got one minute. Okay, thank you. Don't want to start too early.
Computers have six.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise and remove your hats for the invocation. Father God, we ask you tonight to be with us in these, in this meeting. Please help us to be wise stewards of that which you've entrusted us with. Help us to conduct the town's business in an orderly manner. And, Father, please watch over our servicemen and our first responders as they risk their lives, that we might have the life that we have. Please be with those who could not be with us this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. May we have the roll call.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll start with Councilmember McKee.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Wojcik.
Here.
Councilmember Hatch.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Croft.
Here.
Mayor Marley.
Here. Our first item is introductions, presentations, and proclamations. We have a presentation regarding Prescott area leadership by Kathy Icecamp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Kathy Icecamp, who's the immediate past president of Prescott area leadership, and Dave Clever, who's the current board president of Prescott area leadership. They're gonna do a presentation on PAL's 25th year here in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Council, thank you so much for inviting us and allowing us to come and tell you a little bit about Prescott area leadership. We are celebrating our 25th anniversary, but we still feel like we're the best-kept secret in this area. We have a lot of value to this program. It's customized to the Quad City area, which gives you a greater breadth and quality of your training dollar. And we, it's proven by so many alumni and community leaders that are in our area. That's what makes all of Prescott area such a great place to live. It's not like any off-the-shelf program. We have everything geared toward this area. Besides the personal training, the personal development that you get when you go through this program, we learn a lot about our various communities through panels and field trips and shadowing. And Mayor, you were part of a panel last year of all the mayors. And the class just loved that because we got to hear about each of the communities from the people at the top. As you can see, comparable off-the-shelf programs, which are, you know, good programs, but they're not geared toward this area, and they're so much more expensive. Prescott area leadership next year is gonna cost $500 for the one-year program, which is pretty good for, compared to most other personal development programs. We have, on the left, PAL skill-building sessions. Those are the morning sessions, and this is the type of leadership training that we supply to our class members. And I'm gonna have Dave Clever come up here just real briefly and talk about the newest addition to our program that's gonna start with our next class, Class 26. It's, uh, it's called Creative Leadership, and we're gonna be, in conjunction with Yavapai College, we're gonna be getting, giving the class members one credit hour. You wanna tell them about it?
Good evening. Yeah, we're excited to announce that for the first time, people going through the program will be earning a college credit through Yavapai College. The spring session will be taught by Yavapai College professors. And the current Creative Leadership certificate that they offer is three college units, and by going through PAL, they'll get one as part of their tuition. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there it tells you a little bit about it. And the hope is that they will continue on after the PAL program and get the other two college credits. A lot of it is taught online, because a lot of our class members are professionals and business people, and they, you know, they work all day. But they can continue and complete the certificate online. They, they have to attend a few classes, but a lot of it is online. We have alumni in all areas, business owners, education, nonprofit, government. And as, as I said, some of the questions that we get asked is how do you apply? You, you can apply online at PrescottAreaLeadership.org. And we start accepting applications for our Class 26 about the first of February. We'll have all the current information up. And you can just go online and hit the, fill out the form and hit the submit button, and then you will be, the candidates will be contacted. The next program begins in August with a two-day retreat. And then it's once a month after that for the next nine months, or 10 months, I guess it is. Prescott area leadership has also got a Prescott area youth leadership program. It's like a mini version of Prescott area leadership. And our next youth program is gonna be the weekend of, the last weekend in February, which is also the first day of March. And that form, if you know any youth in high school that shows leadership skills that might be interested in a program like this, go online and have them and their parents fill out the form, because we're always looking for, you know, the, the leaders of tomorrow. We've also started about five years ago, the Hungry Kids Program, which is also in Dewey-Humboldt School System and here in Chino. It's expanded. One of the things I wanna call attention to real quick is the Man/Woman Youth of the Year Awards. This is where we highlight somebody in our area, a woman or a man and a youth who show exceptional leadership. They are people that have really contributed to the community that they live in. And our, our awards program is in April, and we are currently looking for nominations. So if you know of anybody, and I know there are wonderful people here in Chino, the lady that started the Hungry Kids Program here comes to mind. But there's just so many wonderful people, youth, men and women. And if you know of anybody, please go online and fill out an application. We have extended the deadline to February 6th, so it's coming to a close real quickly. I also gave Cecilia some hard copies of the nomination form that you can fill out and mail in. But that's, and we have, we've also got a community garden in, in Prescott where we donate a lot of food every year to various Meals on Wheels and, and various food pantries. So, in a nutshell, that's our program, and I appreciate you letting us come and tell you about it. Anything else?
Well, I just wanna mention, I'd like to mention that the Prescott area youth leadership is totally paid for.
Excellent.
Yep, so if you know of any teenagers that are interested, it's over a weekend, and it's a great program. Lot of fun.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is consideration and possible action to review a presentation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board by members of the board. I believe Eric Smith is going to be, well, Chris, are you gonna be introducing?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Bartels, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Staff Liaison. It's been a while since we've come to you and give us an update on what we've been doing for the past year. Tonight, we'll be giving you a presentation, actually Eric Smith will be giving you a presentation on a short-term project priority list that we've been developing over the past, like, six to eight months. So with that, I'll introduce Eric Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. As Chris mentioned, my name's Eric Smith. I'm a volunteer for the town and have lived in Chino Valley about 10 years. And I'm proud to be affiliated with your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And with that, I'd like to real quickly introduce my fellow committee members. Our chairman, Todd Leig, George Cooper, Carrie Barnes, Celia Vander Mullen, who is also on your General Plan Committee. And then is Donna Armstrong, did she come in? We have one last member that might be running just a little bit late. And the, the purpose of this presentation is, we wanted to present to you a priority plan that we've been working on for about the past year. And really, seek your endorsement, because it's, we were looking for something that would guide us as a committee, as well as help us reach out to, for fundraising efforts, pursuing grants. And so tonight, it's a pleasure to bring this to you. And what I'll do, before we really get into the details of the different items that we think are important, I'd like to kinda share with you a little bit about the, the planning process. Just to preface the presentation just a little bit, you know, it's important to note we really have some facilities here in Chino Valley that we can be proud of. We, obviously, in better economic times, there was a lot of foresight within the community to go after and build some quality recreation facilities. And, and we really have kind of a notable item, too, is that we're one of the first communities in Arizona that pursued a Rails-to-Trails project. We're converting the Santa Fe Railroad to the Peavine Trail. And, and while the general plan identified a need to do more long-range planning for Parks and Recreation, we felt that we needed something as a committee that looked short-range, really only 24 months out, that we as a committee could dive into and, and really put a lot of effort into it. The shoulder, the, the burden really falls on our shoulders, because we have to not only undertake the workload, but we have to go out and recruit other volunteers to help us with that endeavor. And then we're hoping that a, a planning effort such as this will also help us pursue grants through nonprofits, foundations, et cetera. We, early on, when we first started discussing this about 14 months ago, we had to establish some criteria, because we knew our lists were gonna be quite long to begin with. And we knew that we had to be realistic, they had to be tangible items, maybe items that were already designed but not yet constructed. Some things that had some safety-related components, as well as better appeal to persons with disabilities, accommodating folks with, who have limited abilities. And trying to complete things that have been started but not quite finished, things that have potential or are shown, shown as a popular trend. Another thing that we really looked hard at is, is a few items that could really bring revenue to the community. And I'll, I'll go into some more detail for the, for that in just, just a moment. And, and as I mentioned, we, we had to identify things that we, as a committee, could, could take on our shoulders for implementation. So in late 2013, we started, kinda started our wish list, identifying locations, projects, priorities, opportunities. And then we, as a committee, had to put all of those items through a scoring, ranking process. And that really weeded out a lot of the items that were originally suggested. And then for our final list, we had to really define the most basic needs of each, given that monies through grants and foundations are limited. And we had to really look at the objective that we're trying to accomplish, funding sources, details, phases, and then we even had to attach ballpark approximate costs to each one. And, but the disclaimer that, that I'd like to share with you is that we're not asking the town for any money. Any, we, we know that right now, anything that we wanna undertake, we have to go find the money to do it. And there are some things you'll see that might be better accomplished by staff that could maybe help with future budget requests, but we know that now is not the time for, for that. So with that, I'll, I'll jump into what we feel was by far the most, highest priority for the community, and that is to build the new skate park that has been designed. We're confident that we can start pursuing some grants. There's the Tony Hawk Foundation that's known for funding skate parks in smaller communities. We'll have to look at a lot of other funding sources, but our goal is to really try to get the wheels in motion for, to try to find some funding for that skate park to benefit the youth. And please stop me at any, at any time if I can go into more detail, I'd be happy to. The next item that we felt was important is, you know, we, we really have a great trail here in the Peavine Trail. And it really is a quality trail. It, it does serve some people, but it sure has the potential to serve more. And it has a lot of great qualities to it. We, we'd like to ultimately improve the tread a little bit. We'd like to add some amenities to the trail, signage to help people find it, rest areas, dog waste dispensers, and, and just some other amenities to, to increase its appeal. But the access is good. There's many places, as you know, that are, the access to the trail are very good. I use it with my dog. I see a lot of other people use it, and I think it's just a great asset to the, the community. But then, the other part of that that we wanted to put in writing is it's our hope, is a committee that someday, the three miles south of the town limits could be secured as a, as a public trail, either, either under the city of Prescott or town of Chino Valley, so that all three communities can finally be interconnected with former railroad corridors. And that's, that's our hope, is that Prescott, Prescott Valley and Chino Valley will someday all be connected with about 20 miles of former railroad grades. And so, moving on to the next item, and some of these, you'll notice, we get into the finest of detail. Others are a little more vague, because they require a little more planning. This one is a community center park, playground receives a lot of use. It's, it's really, it benefits a lot of youth throughout the year. It has a lot of amenities, amenities to it. It serves different age groups. But what, what we would like to do is, right now, there's some elevation differences with the playground. We'd like to do some terracing. We'd like to remove the sand that's there, because sand is good for fall protection, but it's, it's just not suitable for wheelchairs. It can become a pretty, a pretty hot surface. We'd like to go with the more modern material, like the engineered wood fiber that's made for playgrounds, and, and go with some borders to contain that. And so that's, that's what we're trying to identify here, is to, to improve that playground, make it safer, make it more appealing, increase its exposure, if you will, maybe for kids with disabilities. And then in the future, we, we recognize that we'll have to look at the playground equipment that's there and, and even try to replace some of that aging equipment. But that's pretty far out in the future. Another item that we looked at, when we looked at the aquatics facility, is two, two different things with the aquatic facility. The first one is, picture on the far left is the, the door that goes in and out of the snack bar area. And it's not a secure ingress egress. For someone leaving at night, that might be an employee, that might be leaving, the last person to leave, it's just not secure. And so our hope there would be to extend the fence to bring that ingress egress into the compound itself, so that, so that person working the snack bar late in the day is, feels like they're in a more secure environment. To complement that, on the other end of the building, the meeting room, we see great potential there for increasing some revenue for the town in terms of rentals. So for birthday parties, perhaps adding some shade outside of that, that meeting room. And just really trying to increase the ability for people to use it, even if the, the pool is not open for the season, having that, that facility available for rentals, just for revenue back to the town. This item is, it's actually our request for more time, if you will, to look at the potential of the former Head Start Building, the multipurpose building that's part of the Community Center Park. And look at, look at it in two ways. One, the entrance area, explore a possible shaded and landscaped courtyard area that could be used for weddings and other types of functions that would be shaded but yet outdoors. And then look at the interior of the building for a variety of rentals, for revenue, a variety of classes. We recognize that the building has to be managed by, by the town. However, we might be able to get a nonprofit partner that could help with, with that marketing and, and, and reservations and things of that sort. But we, as a part of this presentation, we're, we're just really requesting perhaps another six months that we can look at the, the greatest potential for that building, for revenue and benefiting the town, and then bring that back to you as a separate presentation, hopefully, late summer. Also, in that same area, the Community Center Park, as you know, staff just built a terrific dog park over in the, the eastern part of the park. It, it's a great location for a dog park. It, it, it's really the desire of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, perhaps to add some more amenities to that park. Possible shade structure with some picnic tables, some benches, a drinking fountain, dog waste dispenser. And once again, we recognize that this, this has to fall entirely on us. We, we're the ones that have to go and raise the money to, to initiate that. But it's really just about adding some more amenities and hopefully increase the visitation to that site. Another amenity that we wanna add to, to the Community Center Park, you, you might recall, originally there were some sand volleyball pits. They weren't in the, or courts, they weren't in the right location. And with the changes that are occurring there at Community Center Park, with the maintenance yard being moved out of there, it opens up a, a great opportunity for a four-court sand volleyball complex, for tournaments, revenue generating, bringing people into the community, leagues. There could be volleyball camps taking place there. And with the sand volleyball complex now at Pioneer Park in such a state of disrepair, this would be the only public and functional sand volleyball complex in the whole Quad Cities area. So we're, we're hoping it could be unique to, to Chino Valley. At Memory Park, there's a terrific little playground there. However, it really does need some borders and some fall safety material, like the engineered wood fiber that we mentioned earlier. And so, as a part of the rentals that take place there with the Ramada for group functions, birthday parties, et cetera, we'd like to add some borders to, to that playground. And then out in the future, we'd like, and the playground, incidentally, is for the two-to-five-year-olds. And out in the future, we'd like to expand that fundraising to maybe even try to bring a, a larger playground into that facility that serves the five-to-12-year-olds. And there's certainly room there to try to fit all that in. But, so this is kinda, this is really kind of a short-term, long-term goal, if you will. And as a part of that, the restroom does need some upgrades to it. The, the existing restroom right there, that does see quite a bit of use with the park and the rentals, we'd like to improve some of the ADA access and kinda redesign the interior of the restrooms with some more grab bars, better ADA accessibility, maybe some low water or, or energy conserving devices like waterless urinals, timored hand dryers, so that nobody has to stock paper towel in there, spigots that are on a timer to save water. And so, as a part of that remodel, that would be, it'd be a total package. Now, we could try to fundraise for this, but it, this is, this might be something that's also addressed maybe in a future budget, where, where staff could undertake it maybe in the off-season. But, but it does, it does need some attention at some point. And then this, this might be the most vague action item on here, but, but we wanted to emphasize that we, we as a advisory board, we value the, the special events that are unique to Chino Valley. And the Spring Fest, Territorial Days, Halloween event at Memory Park is a huge hit. The Fourth of July event. And we, we'd like to see those special events continue. We wanna do anything we can to help support those special events, maybe even add to them. Or you'll see the comment there about the Spring Fest combined with the Grindr Race, so that, that bicycle race. You know, anything we can do to create events that are unique or continue events to bring revenue into the town, that's, that's our hope there. And then as addition to that, you know, there is great potential for additional sporting tournaments, and I'll, I'll touch on that on a future slide here. At the Community Center Park, basically, just a little bit to the west of the dog park is a, an area that's kinda been reserved for a future pavilion that was, is a part of the original master plan for Community Center Park. There is still some funding that was dedicated to that effort. We'd, we'd probably have to raise quite a bit more money to add to that funding, but our hope would be to add a pavilion to that area that could be reserved for big group functions, family gatherings, birthday parties, as, at, once again, as a revenue source to bring money back into the town. And something that's becoming so common nationwide is having a cadre of volunteers that are dedicated to the parks and trails. And this is happening all over, where, and a lot of them are the senior populations that really wanna give back to a community, and so many communities are doing, they're either called park rangers or stewards, or just park volunteers in general, who patrol. They sometimes can do maintenance, they inspect for safety things, they can find vandalism right away, they can initiate calls to the police department sometimes, if they see something that's not right, suspicious behavior. There's, there's just so many opportunities that these volunteers can help. Volunteers can do, can save the town a lot of money, but, but they do require some coordination training and, as, as, as you would expect. And tying back into the sports tournaments and the ability for the town to bring in revenue with sports tournaments, this, this component here, this is the, the second most expensive item in this priority plan, and that's to add ballfield lighting to the two-south fields at the four-plex. And there are grants out there. There's a couple of grant sources, like Baseball Tomorrow Fund, US Soccer Foundation. APS has been known to make big donations toward ballfield lights. Musco Lighting is really kind of the state-of-the-art. It's become very energy-efficient. It can even, the new lighting really doesn't have as much light pollution as some of the older ballfield lighting that you still see in other cities. And tying into this is if, if all four fields were lit, the town could attract some larger softball or soccer tournaments to the town. And, and, and one thing that's kinda coming up in discussion in the Quad Cities area, there's a, there's an effort to bring in a national girls' softball tournament in about two years. And Prescott does not have enough fields to accommodate a tournament of that magnitude. It would be about 100 teams coming from all over the United States. They would be looking to Chino Valley in hopes of using this facility as well. And the beauty of that is that they come, you know, these, whatever the age group, they come in for upwards of three to four days. Thankfully, we have some lodging here, and they stay right in the community. They spend their money right here, and so tournaments really have a, a great opportunity to bring some money back in. But unfortunately, it does require the ability to have night games, because often these tournaments will run till close to midnight at times. This item, this, the stage structure that benefits the Fourth of July event and other events at Community Center Park... events at Community Center Park, it, it is the desire of the board, perhaps, look at some type of a shade for that stage so that the musicians are not in the sun, to really accommodate music for longer periods of time. And there, there really are some very economical designs that are out there that, that we'd like to explore. This item is the Center Street Park, pretty, pretty small item, but it was a desire of the board to add some picnic tables and benches to that Center Street Park, which is really just a small neighborhood park. But, but since it is dedicated as a park site with some shade trees, the idea was just bring it in a couple of amenities so that people could perhaps enjoy it a little bit more. And then the last item here is really just the interface between Memory Park and the public library with a fair amount of traffic in this area. We just looked at perhaps some type of traffic calming or pedestrian signage, or even possibly a crosswalk, just to allow people of all ages to make this, this transition from the park back and forth to the library. So really, just to conclude, you know, our, our criteria really was very diverse in terms of everything from safety to ADA accessibility, completing things that maybe have already been designed or started, trying to bring revenue potential into the town with a variety of programs, sports, and activities, and, and really do some things to bring the parks and trail system to the, the best standard it can be, given the economic times, and, and really benefit the people that live here now, but maybe even attract future residents, people who, who look at communities to see what they have in terms of, for parks. And with that, we're seeking your endorsement, but we'd really like to entertain any questions that you might have.
May I move a question?
I appreciate the presentation. I grew up in parks and played league ball and such, but I, in this position, got to watch the budget items. There are a couple of questions I have, may I ask more than one?
You bet.
The cost of buying those lights and putting them in is one thing, but the cost of keeping them burning is quite another. And, you know, if the town's expected to do that, we probably should, at least in this present environment, look at how much that's going to cost us in addition. Somewhere, there's some money sitting around that was donated in the original plan, I think, by the newspaper, for an amphitheater, and I don't see the amphitheater anywhere in this plan. It was part of the original park plan, we were supposed to have an amphitheater, I think there's 25. Joe, did you ever find out how much money we have for that? How much is it now? And I don't see it anywhere in the plan, that was a big part of the original plan.
I, just off the top of my head, I believe it was about 28,000, and we reserve that in the grant fund.
Yeah, and then there was supposed to be, they were going to give us a certain amount each year, but when the program failed, we ceased to get those donations.
Right.
And it was specifically for an amphitheater.
Right, and we designated that.
Yeah. And then, that's the other thing, when, when you're looking at upgrades, you know, APS has plans for solar panels where even with municipalities, they will reduce the cost. Now, those buildings are shut down in the winter to save us some, some money in terms of cost of heating and electricity. And I wonder if Mr. Manager, any thought has been given to possibly looking at what APS might do for the, the town in terms of that? Seems to be a newer roof. I know we'd be concerned about a roof at the senior center, but that's a newer building, and I, I don't know if we've even considered that. Thank you so much for your presentation, it just looks great.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Did you wish to speak to the solar panels?
Um, yeah, I'd like to take a step backward and thank Prab for all of the thoughtful planning that went into this. I mean, there's a lot of research here, and this is exactly what Chino needs, that Chino needs a plan to work off of. And, and I'm very, I, I just floored at the detail and the quality of the plan, thank you so much. I, I don't know about the solar panels and the roof, we'll have to look into that. But I'm, I'm thrilled that there's a plan and a direction in front of Prab.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we can schedule that for a future agenda item and continue forward. Our next item is Call to the Public. Call to the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council concerning a subject that's not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Total time for Call to the Public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Do we have anyone for Call to the Public this morning? Yes, in the back row? Yes, sir. Please come forward and tell us your name.
Good evening. My name is James Nagel, and I'm, I'm here to help you guys understand that the poorest of the poor people out here in the Meadows areas and that are on septic and are, were taken off the septic and put onto sewer, it's unsustainable for us. None of us can afford this. You know, the people who are responsible for paying for this, they're low-income, they're elderly, they're disabled. You know, and by the time these people pay all their other bills, and then they're trying to pay this new sewer bill that they have that just keeps increasing on us, they don't have the money to afford, you know, basic essentials like food, gas, and any, just the basics. And they're now being forced to pay 65, up to $80 a month, some of these people are. That means that these bills will keep adding up, and what they can't pay is just put on their house. They're getting liens on their houses, and these people cannot pay them. I was sitting on the corner the other day, and I had, I was there for an hour and a half. I had five people that have between $3,000 and $5,000 on their home already as a lien. Okay, these people can't pass this on to their relatives when they die, because some of them are about to die. My neighbor's 72 with cancer, and she's already getting a lien on her house. She can't be here because she can't go out at night because she's sick. If she lives another 10 years, she will owe the state $60,000. You know how much her house is worth? You're killing us out there with this sewer system. You're building it on the poorest of the poor people, and we're drowning. And I would like you guys to help us fix this, because we can't afford it. I just had a stopper put in my house. I have three kids, my wife works, and I work, but we can't afford all our bills. I bought the house thinking, you know what I can buy here in Chino Valley? Because it's, it's cheaper to, to live, and it's a nice place. But if I knew I was going to have to pay upwards of $80 a month for sewer, I would have gone somewhere else. But now I'm stuck here, and there's nothing we can do about it. You don't hear from the people in Chino Meadows, so a lot of them are elderly, a lot of people are getting home right now. So they can't come here and tell you guys this. I sat on the corner an hour and a half, I had all kinds of people stopping and asking me what to do. And I tell them to come here, and they tell me they can't. I tell them to call the governor. Governor can't do anything. I call him twice a week. I call these guys in the back, back here, all the time. And alls they say is, well, you guys got to come up and talk. Well, these people can't come up, and I'm here to help them. I'm calling everybody I can, you guys are municipality. Nobody tells you guys what you can charge us for sewer. If it was a private place, they could say, hey, you guys are charging too much. I was talking to a person down in Phoenix, they pay $20 for their sewer, I pay 64, and I paid my sewer upfront. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nagel, if you would, hang on for a second. Can you pass my business? If you can give me a call at that phone number, I'd like to visit with you this week, okay? Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You bet. Continuing, any others for Call to the Public? Okay, Call to the Public is now closed. Response to the Public. Response to the Public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised during Call to the Public at a previous meeting. At our last meeting, we had a citizen get up and speak about town regulations and how they could support agribusiness. Thursday night, we had a study session, and we began the first steps towards dealing with that. So hopefully, in the future, we'll be coming out with some good news on that. Next item is Current Event Summaries and Reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events, or ask a staff member to provide the same. Presentation on information requested by the mayor and council will be made and questions answered. No action will be taken. Does anybody have any reports on this side of council? No. Any committee reports on this side of council? All right. Usually, I do a mayor's report, but I spoke with Chuck Nguyen earlier this afternoon, and he had some presentations he wanted to make, so I'll give up my mayor's report time
Thank you, Mayor, I'll owe you breakfast. I apologize for Jamie for not getting this on the agenda. We're trying to deal with 24/7 schedules, and getting everybody here on one night was a little difficult. So by the time we got that arranged, it was a little late to get it on the agenda. So I do appreciate you letting me sneak this in. Tonight, I wanted to make some accommodations to some of my staff, and I'd like to do it publicly. In the past, sometimes we did this in officers' meetings, but I feel it's important that the council see this, as well as the public, some of the things the officers are doing. About a week before Christmas, three of my officers responded to a 911 hang-up call. So on the way, they, obviously, they don't know what's going on, they arrive and find a house on fire. Putting their own safety aside, they entered that house and removed the resident who was inside the house. They were also aware that another gentleman might have been in the house, so they made attempts to locate him, and fortunately, he was not home at the time, and nobody was hurt. So I just wanted to recognize them with, you know, accommodation. And what the department has, we actually have a life-saving medal, so each officer will receive a life-saving medal. So I can have them step up, and I'll present them.
Yes, sir.
You can come up together, so you don't have to be scared. Try to balance all this. I'll introduce them all, then I'll hand their stuff, since I only have two hands. Officer Mike Paredes, who's one of our K-9 handlers, Officer Jeff Pizzi, and Officer Dominic Gillis, who is a brand-new officer and was actually in training that shift. So he got a baptism by fire, literally, literally.
Literally.
Yes. So I'd like to give them a round of applause for a job well done.
Thank you very much.
I have one more thing, since you let me have the mic, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Some of you remember, we had our National Night Out back in August, and this was actually our first time doing anything of this scale. And we submitted pictures and information about our, our National Night Out to the National Association, and we actually got a Rookie of the Year Award for our event. And so I'd like to recognize Mary Lee Easton, because Mary Lee actually did about 99% of the work on this thing. And so, this is just awesome that out of probably over 500 National Nights Out, we got the Rookie of the Year Award, so, if I can get it out of the box, we'll just keep it in the box.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So no pressure on Mary Lee, but we're already planning for this year's, and we're expecting bigger and better, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mayor, for letting me take the time.
You bet, you bet. If those guys had pulled the mayor out of the house, you'd have docked them a week's pay.
I would have, and I'd put them in the corner.
And put them in the corner, all right, thank you. Mr. Smith, did you have a town manager's report?
Yes, sir, no report.
Okay. Consent Agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Does anyone wish to remove anything from consent agenda? No. Ms. Lewis?
All right, for our terribly long consent agenda, here we go. 6A, Consideration and Possible Action to Accept the January 13, 2015 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Motion to Accept the January 13, 2015 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Second it.
We have a motion in two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action Items. Item A, Continued from January 13, 2015. Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt Resolution Number 15-1053 in Support of Arizona Sunshine 2015, a free health services event in the Quad Cities area to be held June 17 and 18, 2015. Ms. Gritman.
Good evening again. I see Mr. Dirksen isn't here this evening. However, I did speak with him on the phone. I think the only new thing I can add is the last sentence that I've added in the staff report, is that he has assured me that all participating agencies will be named as additional insured on the liability policy for the event.
Okay.
So I do know that will happen, we'll get it before the event occurs. If we don't, then we just won't participate.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the only other additional thing I have.
Any questions on this side? Any questions?
Did he identify what it is he wants? And I want to be certain that we do not use overtime for this event as we have in prior appointments.
Well, he personally didn't, but I had a phone call from the gentleman who's in charge of the security, and they're asking us for probably one day of coverage with Prescott Valley. I would have to arrange that with the police chief as far as the schedule, to make sure that they can fit it in with their.
And I think you need to make sure that's what Prescott Valley wants, because they're the ones in charge of that building. And it's not just what Sunshine thinks they want, because it's the city of Prescott Valley that now owns that, it's no longer Tim's, it's Prescott Valley.
Right, right.
Now, there's an error in the summary, it still says Tim's. And there needs to be, you know, once our name is attached to it, if we don't have that certificate of insurance, we're potentially.
Right.
So they need to get that to us soon, you know, some kind of an agreement that they will have it by that date in writing. A spoken word is fine, but they should be sending us confirming that in writing so that you have it. I support the concept, but we need to be careful. Some of the things he was asking for after the meeting were just things we probably shouldn't do.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hatch.
I'm not familiar.
And I believe our, oh, Mr. Brown, if you would hold for a second, I believe our town manager, in the resolution, basically, this will be a discretionary item insofar as what they're asking for. We can provide it if it's, if, if possible, it's basically at discretion.
Yes, sir, it's my understanding, we're in control of what we provide and what we don't provide, it's, it's up to us to decide. And with council and our attorney and staff's expertise, I'm sure we can stay within the limits of our, our authority.
Okay, I think we can do that. Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Hi, Greg Brown, Board of Supervisors. We also had the same contact with Sunshine and talked with them at length over this. And we gave them an outline of what they needed to provide to indemnify all cities and towns, as well as the county, in regards to any kind of liability in regards to this show. Specifically- Specifically, they're planning on having this at the Event Center in Prescott Valley. They'll be using Prescott Valley policemen and/or deputy sheriffs from Yavapai County. They won't be asking the city to provide anything. What they're looking for now is just a verbal pat on the back and say, "Go forward." And that's what we've already provided to them in a resolution that you're considering as well. And I believe the town of Prescott Valley has already done that now. I haven't heard anything from Prescott, but they're not even involved, basically, other than maybe some of their residents are going to partake. We also made sure, very sure, that they have to prove to the county and our Health Department that they have actual indemnification for malpractice for both dental and medical treatments that are being provided. So we're trying to cover all those bases through the Health Department, and rest assured, we're basically just saying we in favor of it.
You bet. It's an expression of support. Thank you. All right. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-1053 in support of Arizona Sunshine 2015 event.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B, consideration and possible action to accept the comprehensive annual financial report and the annual expenditure limitation report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, as prepared by Hinton Burdick CPAs and advisors. And I believe this is Ms. Robin Sibley. Is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Robin Sibley. I'm with Hinton Burdick, and we were out in the fall performing the audit as of June 30, 2014. And so my purpose here tonight is to present to you the results of that audit, as well as the financial position of the town as of June 30, 2014. So our auditor's report was a clean opinion, and our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance, there was no financial findings. There was no compliance findings, and in our other matters, we did have a finding for the utility fund operating losses. Our state compliance report was also a clean opinion. So our findings and recommendations report, as I mentioned, there were no financial control findings noted this year. And they did clear a finding that we had in previous year, which was related to year-end accruals and adjustments that we had. And so it's commendable to the staff that they did not have this finding. It's a typical finding that you'll find for most cities and towns. And so just want to commend your staff for not, for clearing that finding and not having that significant accounting adjustments. We're now going to move on to the results of the government-wide financial highlights. So this is the, all the funds combined in total. And at the end of June 30, 2014, the net position for the town as a whole was $22 million. And over time, the increase and decrease in this net position is an indicator of the financial health of the town. And in the year 2014, there was a slight decrease of $138,000. Net assets for the government activities is $930,000, and for the business-type activities is $1 million. We just wanted to draw your attention to this financial statement. It's the statement of activities, and it includes all the funds combined. Just want to, you know, if you want to peruse over it at your own time, it just is a good statement that gives you good information on the government as a whole. It tells you where revenues are coming from by source. It tells you expenses that are spent by program type. And so we just wanted to draw your attention to this statement, as it's pretty informative. Continuing on with the government-wide results. At the end of the year, governmental assets increased by $755,000. The significant governmental capital assets this last year for 2014 was the Bronhorst statues, the Road 3 North Stormwater Project, the Road 4 South Project, Road 4 South Rightofway, the law enforcement range, and the library expansion. For business-type capital assets, they decreased by 1.2 million, and the only significant business-type capital asset was an upgrade on a sewer vac truck. Long-term debt in the governmental funds was $11 million at the end of the year. If you notice on page 40 of the financial statements, it'll show you future debt requirements. And business-type long-term debt at the end of the year was $14 million. This was a decrease from prior year of $482,000. We're now going to move on to the results of the individual funds. This is the results of the general fund. It had an increase from last year of $3.3 million in 2013 to $4 million in 2014. And the general fund reported revenues in excess of expenditures of $741,000. The actual resources that were received in the general fund were more than the final budget by $41,000, and expenditures were less than the budget by $700,000. In the utility funds, both the enterprise funds experienced operating losses for 2014, which is mainly a result of recording depreciation expense. And cash flows from operations were positive for the sewer fund and negative for the water fund. The sewer fund had an overall decrease of net assets of $975,000, and the water fund had a decrease of $93,000. The water and sewer funds have incurred operating losses for the last few years, and we'll show a graph in a little bit that just shows that trend. And we continue to encourage management to explore ways to improve the financial condition, and we are aware that that is what you're doing. So now, we're just going to move on to a few graphs that show a five-year trend. And this particular graph is showing the trend in the general fund for cash. So as you can tell, cash levels in the general fund have increased over the last five years, and there is no restricted cash in the general fund. This shows expenditures and revenue trend over the last five years, and you would expect in a general fund for them to break even over time. And as you can tell, over the last five years, they've pretty much come close to breaking even. This chart just reflects an overall 9% increase in spending from last year. 2013 was $6.1 million, and 2014, $6.7 million, and this is in the general fund. So this five-year trend is the cash balance in your capital improvements fund. And this fund is expected to fluctuate based on the projects occurring in each year for capital improvements. And the road impacts fee fund, you'll also have cash fluctuate as well. The decrease this last year in 2014 was a result of a transfer out to the capital projects fund for projects incurred in that fund. The highway user revenue fund cash trend over the last five years has been pretty stable. Just the decrease in 2011 was just a utilization of resources for projects that year. This is the trend in the water fund over the last five years for revenues and expenses. And you'll see the top line, the pink line, is expenses, and the bottom line is revenues. This does not, this does not take into account transfers that were made into the fund. And this is the cash trend in the water fund. The balance that you see at the end of 2014 is all restricted cash, which is held for customer deposits. This is the sewer fund, revenues and expenses over the last five years. It also has reported operating expenses in excess of revenues, which is primarily due to recording depreciation expense. And the cash in the sewer fund at the end of 2014 is also restricted cash for customer deposits. So these next two slides I'm going to show just is a graph or a chart of the fund balance of each fund, comparing it between the two years. So the top graph is 2013, and the bottom one is 2014. It just shows each fund's dollar amount of their fund balance at the end of the year. This, the next slide, kind of, it just compares them two side by side. And so you can see from this graph that the general fund and the capital improvement fund were slightly up from prior year. And the water fund, sewer, road impact fee fund, and the HERF fund had a decrease in fund balance from prior year. We wanted to make you aware that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has put out a new statement, Statement Number 68, and it's in regards to reporting pension liability and expense. In the past, the Arizona retirement system has recorded the full liability and expense on their financial statements. And what this new statement is now requiring every city and town and government to record their own liability and expense for their employees. And so this new statement will be in effect for next year for the financial statements.
Are we supposed to hold questions?
Excuse me. Would you prefer that we hold questions till the end, or would you like them at the end of each panel that you show?
This is my last panel. If you would like to ask me questions now, you're welcome to. It's fine.
I'm just curious as to what exactly that means. Does that mean we have to carry on the books, any future retirement expenses? We have to account for ones that are not being paid out, but we're expected to pay?
So is what it will entail is the Arizona State Retirement System will come up with liability and related expense for your town based on employee census data that your town will provide to them. And they'll come up, it'll be a complicated calculation, but they'll come up with an amount that you need to record as a liability. Now, it's important to note that this is only going to be recorded in your business-type funds. It won't be recorded in the governmental fund or the general fund and the HERF fund. So you'll see it on the government-wide statements, which is the very first statement that I discussed, because that includes all the funds. So you'll see a liability and an expense there. And then you'll also see it in your water fund and your sewer fund, a liability with a related expense. Now, the first year of inception, it's going to be a large amount, because you've never recorded it before. And so because of that, it won't be an expense that first year. It will be actually hit against fund balance. And so it'll all flow through the balance sheet that first year. And then going forward, any changes in the liability will then be recorded through the statement of activities, your income statement, as an expense. So we want to make you aware, because it can have a significant effect on the financial statements going forward for those funds.
Follow-up question?
So does that mean we have to keep the money aside to balance that? I mean, you have assets and liabilities. If it's a liability, does that asset need to be set aside to balance it?
Yes. So your revenues need to be able to cover those expenses going forward.
So there's money we can't use for anything else. It has to sit there and balance it?
Well, you would just hope to have enough reserves and cash over time to be able to pay those expenses. So it'll be included in your income statement. So you'll have revenues less expenses, and this will be one of those expense items. Does that answer your question?
This has been an item of great concern with the cities and towns.
Yeah. Most aren't real thrilled with this new statement.
You bet. You bet. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions on this side? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time. I'd also like to thank the staff. Once again, they did an excellent job of being ready for us when we came out and answering all our questions. And again, as I mentioned earlier, they cleared that finding that we had last year, which is very commendable. So I'd like to thank them as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to accept the comprehensive annual audited financial report and the annual expenditure limitation report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, as prepared by Hinton Burdick CPA and advisors.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, discussion regarding state law requirements for removing a council-appointed commissioner, committee, or board member. Situation and analysis says this topic was raised during the January 13 agenda item pertaining to planning and zoning commissioner appointments, but was not concluded. Mayor Marley has asked the town attorney to present state law requirements for removing a council-appointed commissioner, committee, or board member. And I spoke with Ms. Smiley earlier. I said, "Could we keep it as short as possible?" And so hopefully, we can do that. Thank you.
Actually, Mayor, you asked me for a yes or no, and I said, "No."
Thank you.
Basically, the question was whether or not there is anything in Arizona state law that requires a hearing to remove a planning commissioner. And the answer to that is no. There is nothing. The cities and towns municipalities get their authority to have a planning commission from ARS Section 9, 461.01. And the way the statute reads, it's very brief, and it says that a municipality may create a planning commission, and if it does, then the planning commission must have at least five members, and that the council can determine the organization, number of members, terms of office, and the method of appointment and removal by local ordinance, as long as the commission has at least five members. So that being said, the current UDO does require an executive session before a planning commissioner is removed. And this actually tracks, sorry, the language in the UDO actually tracks the language from another statute that deals with housing authority for municipalities. And it allows, it gives you several reasons why a planning commissioner might be removed and requires an executive session before removal. The statute that it corresponds with requires a hearing, but your provision requires an executive session. That's not a hearing.
Thank you. I was happy with the no, but I appreciate the rest of it.
If I may ask some questions?
Yes, ma'am.
With reference to our current requirement in our own wording, it says, "No executive session shall be held if the commissioner in question requests a public hearing. The council shall file a written statement of the reason for the removal." Now, that sounds like they're entitled to ask for a public hearing, therefore, they must have noticed. The Arizona revised statute on when we can hold an executive session also addresses the same thing, and one of the reasons that we can have an executive session is to remove an officer, appointee, or an employee, and they may demand that the discussion or consideration occur at a public meeting. And the public body shall provide the officer, appointee, or employee with written notice of the executive session, as is appropriate, but not less than 24 hours, for the officer, appointee, or employee to determine whether the discussion or consideration should occur at a public meeting. You know, a hearing is one thing. We've often heard of administrative hearings and the right to have one, and basically, you say your piece and you leave. This sounds like our appointee has every right to ask that we have a discussion in public, both our own code section and the state law. While it's not in the same section you mentioned, it certainly is when what governs when we can hold an executive session. And I was concerned, because these were brought to my attention by several members of the... And I was concerned, because these were brought to my attention by several members of the public who were very concerned about that issue. And perhaps I used the wrong word by saying hearing. You know, to me, this is essentially a hearing. When you ask it to come before a public body, doesn't mean you have a right to counsel administrative hearings frequently, you don't. In my mind, that's the way I saw it, was kind of an administrative hearing. But it appears they have a right to have that discussion in public, and they're entitled to notice. And I apologize for the use of the word hearing, but, you know, it's basically why I questioned it, and I was a little concerned, you know, when I brought it up.
You bet, thank you. I got my question answered, so I'm good.
Okay.
Did anybody else have any other, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
The part that she's referring to in Arizona revised statutes is 38-431.03, executive sessions.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, like I said, I got my question answered, thank you, Ms. Smiley. Chair would entertain a motion to close this?
Don't we just go on?
Well, we can just close that discussion, we have to go on to item A here.
Make a motion to go into executive session for item B. It assumes that item A is completed. Make a motion.
There's a motion to go into executive session for item B.
And that's.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We are now going to go into executive session to deal with item B, which says an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3 for discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney regarding legal issues and potential liabilities raised by the town's use of social media. Council members Hatch, McKee, and Wochee. So, we're going to adjourn to executive session. I suppose, did anybody need a break before we do that?
Take five.
Take five, okay. We will meet back in executive session at 7:15 then. Thank you. Is that oak or pine?
It's black walnut and maple.
I'll tell you what, I work with that mahogany, boy, that is something. That's so stringy. All right. All right. Executive action, or, excuse me, action items resumed after the executive session. Council will reconvene the regular meeting. Item A, consideration and possible action with regard to the town's use of social media. Ms. Hatch, since you had brought this, would you like to make a motion insofar as the study session?
Well, I move that we ask staff to continue considering this issue and to make a presentation to us in a study session in March.
Second.
Motion in three seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. You haven't, well, you haven't adjourned us in a while, right?
Are you pointing?
Mr. Turner, yes, sir?
To make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion in four seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, adjourned.
Four seconds, does that mean juices are wild?
Please don't worry, let me give you this information. Because it's not part of the E section, so you're able to have it. This is some of the information that will go in before we begin.
Thank you, sir.